On an increasing housing variety and choices for all incomes. So lots of conversation about middle housing. And that's one of those options for increasing housing options for entry level home buyers, as well as for those that age in place, which were two areas where we heard.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Kent City Council meeting for October 1st, 2024. If you could all please rise and join me in the flags loop.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Interior public, which stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
All right, Kim, could you call the roll, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mayor Ralph?
Here.
Council President Corr?
Here.
Councilmember Boyce?
Here.
Councilmember Boyd?
Here.
Councilmember Fincher?
Here.
Councilmember Larmour?
Here.
Councilmember Michaud?
Here.
Councilmember Troutner?
Here.
Thank you. All right, moving on in the agenda, next item is approval. Are there any changes this evening?
None from staff, Your Honor.
Okay, hearing none. A motion would be in order to approve the agenda as published?
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. All right, we are going to move into the celebration portion of our agenda this evening. The first item we have is Employee of the Month. So every month here at the City of Kent, employees can get together and nominate one of their coworkers to be the Employee of the Month. And this is a person that exemplifies their mission, vision, values, and goals here at the city, whether it be in a special project. But most often, it is just how they show up to work every day and the way that they are committed, not to the organization so much as their coworkers. And that's really what we see in these nominations. So I am very pleased to announce that our October Employee of the Month is Randy Polkbeck. So I am going to read a little bit about Randy, and then Kevin, if you want to come up and join us, and Randy will do a quick picture, and then we'll turn the microphone over. So Randy is our October Employee of the Month. He was originally hired on April 1st, 2002, as a Maintenance Worker Three in the Water Division of the Public Works Department. He was promoted into his current position as a Maintenance Worker Four on December 16th, 2019. Randy performs various skilled tasks involving advanced operating and maintenance procedures at the water treatment plant and related facilities. He was nominated because he consistently has a positive attitude and a smile on his face. See, I told you. This is what I, this is what we hear. We love this. He's always willing to go above and beyond to give back to the city. He works hard on his own accord to make sure that our drinking water and equipment is running smoothly. He's detail oriented and rarely misses anything. Randy is a self-starter, leads by example, and mentors younger employees. Randy is held in high esteem by his colleagues and truly cares about our water quality, his coworkers, and everyone here at the City of Kent. Randy continuously embraces our values, and we celebrate him as October's Employee of the Month. So you want to come up, and we'll do a quick picture. One over.
You sure? Okay. Do I get to speak?
And then you get to speak.
Okay.
Picture's on the way first, so that I don't get in trouble. And then I'll turn it over to the two of you.
You get it.
You getting the picture too?
Oh, you want me in the picture? All right.
All right, now I'll turn it over to the two of you.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, I think you just about said it all. I don't have too many more of these speeches in front of me, but if I had to have, if I had to have a last one, this would be a good one right here. You know, I've had the honor to work with Randy for almost 23 years now. And Randy, I am so incredibly proud of you. You bring integrity. I mean, you are the poster child of integrity. Integrity, honesty. What he has done for this particular team in the last 22 years, you know, we've had a lot of fantastic employees stand up here and accept this award, but I haven't worked with them for 23 years. This one I have. And what he brings to the team will, would break your heart. I mean, he is the epitome of honesty, hardworking. When the chips are down, this is the first man that will cheer you up. He's the first guy that will, will come to you and, and bring a positive moment. I mean, he has, he has such good things to say. He would bring a good light to a dark, cloudy day. And the humor this, this man brings to the table, he would find a rock and, and get you crying, honestly. Randy, I am so proud to work with you. I've been proud to work with you for 22 years. I love you. You know, I am, I am just, I'm so happy to have met you over these years. And I appreciate your work here, and I hope you have many more.
Awesome. Thanks, Dad.
Thank you.
I promised Mayor Ralph I would say a little bit, so I think it's awesome that I got, that I got picked for this. It's pretty neat. It's been a rough couple of last four years, so I just wanted to give kudos to the mayor and Sean Ralph and my bosses and my coworkers. My wife got diagnosed with stage four colon cancer, and so that was a three-year, three-year bout of that. And the city stood behind me and helped me through that. And then she died in my arms on the morning of her birthday on the 5th of December. She was 52, left behind a 17-year-old daughter. And when she was at home on hospice, I would go downstairs and I would walk loops because I couldn't sleep, because, and I would just shake. And the shaking never went away, so I went to the doctor a year later, and he said, "Sorry, son, you've got stage one Parkinson's." So I said, "Well, I got that going for me now," you know, so, okay. And like Bill knows, being a Lebanon Bravo infantry, you just suck it up and keep going. So I had two choices, either be angry at life and be sour, or turn it around and be super positive, be a jokester, and train the younger staff coming up and just be super positive, or just love them like my own son. So that's what I do. I come to work every day and put the game face on and just, it's my other family. So everybody from the mayor on down has just been a great support. So I mean, because all the young guys are like, "What are we going to do when you leave?" I said, "I'm a Kent employee 24/7." I said, "You just call me and I'll help out wherever I can." So I just wanted to say thank you to all you for allowing me to work here for 23 years. Going to be coming up here in April, and I still love this job. It's, it's my family, so.
You deserve a standing ovation. Yeah. All right, yeah, mine.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
I just met Randy about 10 minutes ago, and I always, I have the same feeling for him too. So congratulations, sir. Well done. Thank you.
I've known Randy for a long time, and everything that Kevin said, everything that Randy said about the smile and the joking and the positive attitude, when I'm like, "I don't know how you do it. I don't know how..." I am so grateful for you. Thank you for everything that you do for your team, for this community, and just being that positive light in this world. We need a whole lot more of that. Thanks, Randy, and congratulations on being our October Employee of the Month. All right, we're done. No, just kidding. We've got, we've got a lot of, a lot more good things, but I think that's a fantastic way to kick off, kick off the evening. So the next item on our agenda is Hispanic Heritage Month. So joining us this evening to accept the proclamation is Carlos Moreno. And I met Carlos about a year ago, and he also made me laugh the whole entire time. He is a DJ on our local Hispanic La Grande radio here, that's right here in Kent, and had the best time going on the show and getting to talk a little bit. So I'm going to read the proclamation. Carlos will do a quick photo and then have you speak a little bit, okay? All right, so the proclamation says, "Whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month is known as Mesa de Herencia Hispania." "It's celebrated nationwide from September 15th through October 15th each year. The observation started in 1968 as Hispanic Heritage Week and was expanded by President Ronald Reagan in 1988 to cover the month at which it is celebrated today. And whereas the day of September 15th is significant because it is the anniversary of the independence of Latin American countries Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua. In addition, Mexico and Chile celebrated their independence days on September 16th and 18th respectively. And whereas the City of Kent looks forward to celebrating Mesa de Herencia Hispania with the greater community to highlight the rich heritage, arts, histories, food, music, and traditions of all 26-plus Latin American nations, while recognizing that these nations are not monogamous, and this month celebrates, honors, and pays tribute to all of the contributions to our city and our society. And whereas, the City of Kent recognizes the significant contributions of all Hispanic residents, city employees, business leaders, and outreach groups that help increase cultural awareness, education, enrichment, and community engagement with our residents. It is through their support and community involvement that our city has continued to become more culturally diverse and welcoming, and a welcoming city for everyone. And now therefore I, Dana Ralph, Mayor of Kent, do hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th to be Hispanic Heritage Month in Kent, Washington, and call upon our residents to recognize the achievements and contribution of our Hispanic residents and that, what they do for our city and our community." All right, let's do a photo.
Thank you so much. If you want to tell us.
Wow, I'm so nervous. So, wow. Thank you, thank you so much. I'm so excited to be here. Thanks for the invitation. And I'm from Mexico, from Mazatlan, and working in Mexican station, La Grande, here in Kent. And thank you, thank you for being here. Thanks for your, for your help, for your support, our community, Mexican community, Hispanic community. And so I'm, I'm so happy, I'm so nervous. And, and thank you, thank you so much. You know, we're working every day for our community, for all families, Mexico, Central America, South America, and so happy to be here and representing my community. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for supporting.
Thank you. Viva Latin America! Viva Mexico! It's yours. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. The next proclamation that we have is a little more personal for a couple of us up here. So I'm going to, I'm going to read the proclamation, then we'll, we'll say a few words. It says, "Whereas National Breast Cancer Awareness Month is an annual campaign to raise awareness of this disease that affects both women and men, and to support research for a cure. And whereas according to the American Cancer Society, when breast cancer is detected early and is in a localized stage, the five-year relative survival rate is 99%. And whereas in 2024, an estimated 310, 720,000 women and 2,800 men will be diagnosed with invasive breast cancer. Whereas cancer researchers are optimistic that in 2024, more people will benefit cancer, from cancer breakthroughs, including research that unlocks the biology behind breast cancer disparities, wider access to CAR, T-cell therapy, and better access to clinical trials. Whereas Breast Cancer Awareness Month is an opportunity to unite the community and spread important messages of early detection, screening and prevention, and assistance to women and men during, during and after the treatment to increase survivorship and quality of life. Whereas awareness of the facts and statistics surrounding breast cancer in the United States is key in empowering individuals to make informed decisions about their health. Now therefore I, Dana Ralph, Mayor of Kent, do hereby proclaim October 2024 to be Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Kent, Washington, and encourage our residents to take proactive measures when it comes to cancer screening and support the spread of lifesaving knowledge and resources." So on behalf of our breast cancer survivor, Councilmember Larmour, and myself, we just want to really spread the word. So I have shared my story over and over again. In 2016, my mother kept saying to me, "You have to go get a mammogram." And I was, I was late. I was a couple of years behind when I should have gone and gotten it. And she finally threatened me and said, "If you don't go, I will take you." And my family has heard me say this a million times, there's nothing more embarrassing than being a grown woman and having your mother take you to the doctor. So I made the appointment, and they found, had she not shamed me into, forced me into, loved me into going, I would not have known. And it would not have been something that was treatable. I remember, it's been about a year ago, right? Call from Councilmember Larmour. "Hey, I went and got my mammogram." And they found something. But they found it.
So early.
So early.
Very, very early. And a lot of it was, you know, I made that mental... I'm on, for once, for once I'm on. But yeah, your, your, you know, yearly reminders were always, you know, in the back of my head, and so I kept my appointments. I didn't want my mother to have to escort me, so, yeah. And it was early detection, so I'm one of that, treatable 99%, you know, as are you, because we got, we did the screenings and they found it early enough.
So please, 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 schedule your mammogram. Tell somebody you love to schedule their mammogram. It is something we have to talk about because it is beatable. It's, we can, we make it through. The survival rates are really high if you make that early detection. And I think it's, I think it's really important. And in the proclamation, we talked, talked a little bit about disparities, and it's something that I am just now learning about, but depending on your race and ethnicity, your survival rates are different, and that should not be an okay thing. In 2024, it should not matter. Your zip code, it shouldn't matter, your ethnic background or your race, and we need to all make sure that we're doing our very best to get the word out and make sure that the research is keeping up in serving all people that, that have been diagnosed with breast cancer. So thank you for taking the time to listen to our little, I don't know, soapbox, but it's something that's really important and something, again, very personal, and something that touches just about everybody you know. So get out there and get that appointment scheduled. All right. No segues. This is a, this is an evening of, I don't know how you get from one thing to the next, so we're just going to keep going. Tonight, Council, we have some, I've got before you some requests for confirmation of appointments to both our Human Services Commission and our Kent Parks and Recreation Commission. So the first are appointments to the Human Services Commission. Corlette Byrd is being recommended for appointment to a four-year term for the Human Services Commission, and Devon Mitchell is also being recommended for an appointment. Bios are in the packet. As you all know, it's really important that we have, have these volunteers that are willing to step up and guide our community. We also have some appointments to the Parks and Recreation Commission. Vicky Pettigrew, Ahmed Abokotter, and Crystal Goodwin are being appointed. So processes, you can go out onto our site, fill out an application, and say, raise your hand and say, "I want to volunteer for my community." Find a place where you can plug in and, something that's a passion for you, and that's how we, that's how we interact with our residents, right, and help those decisions and its advisory and good advice to our city council. So are any of our appointees in the audience this evening, I want to make sure and recognize anyone that's here. Thank you. So I'm going to ask you and not put you on the spot. If you would like to come up and say a few words about why you applied, I would absolutely love that. If you do not want to, I'm not going to make you. So completely up to you. I love it. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm very honored to be here, especially at this appointment. This is very important for me in the sense of, I believe that the individuals that make choices, that govern the communities that we're in, they need to be representative of those individuals. And so having this opportunity to really deepen my understanding of what the Kent Parks and Recs does, and how they really help out the community, and really fostering that sense of belonging and inclusion is very important and something that I hold near and dear to my heart. And also, a lot of my values align with a lot of the mission and vision values of the council and of the mayor, and I really appreciate this opportunity, and I'm very grateful to be here. Thank you.
All right, and introduce yourself.
I should have started with that. My name is Crystal Goodwin.
All right. Thank you, Crystal, so much.
Good evening. I'm Corlette Byrd for the Human Service Commission. I applied to that position because I've always been interested in helping our community from PTA to Cub Scouts. I own some businesses here in Kent. We've lived here for like 32 years, raised six children here. I've had a daycare. I'm currently a director at a methadone clinic. And so I'm very interested in our community, how it works, how I can help. And I just was searching Kent website and saw this opportunity. I started digging in, kind of peeked in on a couple of meetings, got involved in the grants process a few months ago, and decided that I wanted to spend some time doing this after living here for so long and being blessed with this beautiful community. So anyways, I hope that I can make a difference and contribute.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate both of you for stepping up for all of our commissioners and board members throughout the city. The work really does make a difference, and this is part of what makes this an amazing community. So thank you both for taking the time this evening, and for all of our future boards, members and commissioners and councils, those are all going to be on consent calendar for your approval this evening. All right, moving on to our last item under Public Communications, we are recognizing three neighborhood councils this evening. Joining us for the presentation is Tracy Taylor, one of our amazing communications professionals. To give us a little background and talk to us about the neighborhood program.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Tracy Taylor. I'm a communications coordinator, and I also facilitate the neighborhood program here in the City of Kent. I am honored to be a part of this, just because I believe neighborhoods are the fabric of what makes Kent. We have such a diverse community, and I've had the pleasure to get to know these three neighborhoods that are here tonight to be recognized through our program called Drinks in the Driveway. This year alone, we've done 14 neighborhoods, which is a record in the three years that we've been doing the program, and we continue to grow and we continue to succeed. And we see a lot more neighborhoods here in Kent continue to develop their councils, their HOAs, and get involved and get plugged in, as mayor would say, to find out more about their city and what the city can offer them. So with that, Madam Mayor, I would like to introduce you to Hillshire Terrace, I believe. We've got Garrison Glen and...
Nature Trails.
Nature Trails Town Homes. Yes, Nature Trails Town Homes. So representatives from those communities, can you come on up, please? I see Hillshire, Garrison Glen, and our others weren't able to make it tonight, so I'm going to have Mayor present you with your...
Hillside Terrace? There you go. And Garrison Glen?
No, they're both, they're both Hillside. Yes. The rest of them did not make it this evening. Okay. Oh, sure. Thank you, guys.
All right. Quick public service announcement. We are always accepting new neighbors, neighborhoods into our neighborhood program. So please, if you're interested, reach out to Tracy Taylor and let's get your neighborhood signed up and access to all of the benefits that come from being one of our recognized neighborhood councils. All right. With that, community events. Council President.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have community events happening at Sessos Showers Center. We have Seattle Thunderbirds playing Prince George Cougars on October 4. October 5 is Junior H returning after the sold-out show that was canceled in 2023. October 8 is again T-Birds versus Tri-City Americans. Lots of T-Bird games happening, October 11 and October 13. And also on October 13 is KISW Halloween, Halabalu starring Goldsmack. And October 23 through 27 is Disney on Ice presenting Magic and the Stars. And tickets are on sale on assessashowerscenter.com. And I would encourage families with young children to be there, dressing up as little Elsa's and whatever else they want to. I know my daughter's excited to be that. So I hope to see families getting, going there because it's always an amazing event with Disney. Disney events are just, just so fun. And Disney on Ice is just amazing. So that is the all other events I got. And I thank you very much. Back to you.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Fincher.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Spotlight Series is, your tickets can be purchased at the Kent website. If you like country, rock, if you like tap dance, if you like Celtic music, Christmas music, there's just all kinds of good entertainment at a great price. It's nice and close here at Kent Meridian High School. So it's a great evening out. Take advantage of it. Check out the website. Also, we have, about a month away, we have the annual Kent Craft Show, the Kent Crafts Market. So that's going to be getting ready for Christmas. Great place to get your Christmas gifts. And that is going to be held at the Senior Center, November 1 and 2. And then we have on the 12th of October over at Hogan Park, we have our, let's see, recycling event. So look on the website, kentwa.gov/talkingtrash. You can find out what's accepted, and you just drive through easy peasy, a real way to get rid of some things and help the environment at the same time. No need to just dump it along the side of the road. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. All right. We will move on in the agenda to reports. Each member of the council participates in meetings outside of just the scheduled council meetings that are on the first and third Tuesday of each month, making sure that at all those regional tables, statewide tables, that Kent's voice is represented, whether that comes to policy decisions or grant funding. Very, very grateful for the work that everyone does. I'm going to kick this off with a couple of quick reports. Serve on the Regional Policy Committee with members from around King County. At this last meeting, we had a presentation regarding the King County Arts and Heritage Tax. So it's a sales tax that the King County Council leveraged to provide funding to arts and heritage programs. All of our Kent residents are paying it. My, my reason in bringing this up is we're working through the implementation plan is there is dedicated funding to arts and heritage organizations in the city of Kent. So if you know anyone that that fits the bill for, please make sure that you look, look to for culture in King County. We would like to see that money that is being put into the system by, by Kent taxpayers coming back and enriching our community. So hoping to see a return on, on those investments. Also had the Puget Sound Regional Council Executive Board had some updates on the development of the next regional transportation plan. So more to come on that. A lot of conversation around funding at the state level. Some assumptions have been made in the past around funding sources. And as we start to get closer to the time when those projects need to be funded, there's a lot of conversation around, as, as gas tax is going down, are we, you know, does the state look to a vehicle mileage charge? What exactly are we going to use to fund transportation projects? So, excuse me. Stay tuned. I will bring back reports as we start to develop that plan. Two fun items. On Wednesday, we did a flag raising for the Thunderbirds, Seattle Thunderbirds that play over at Sessos Showers Center. Several of our council members were there. Thank you for coming down. And it was a great kickoff to the season. They won in overtime on Saturday night. So here's to a good Thunderbirds season. And then today, I was also joined by, I'm going to go down the road so I don't miss anybody, Councilmember Troutner, Councilmember Michaux, Council President Corr, Councilmember Boyd, and Councilmember Fincher, right over here at the Sounder Station for the groundbreaking of the second Sounder parking garage. This is a project that has been a decade plus in making, and I'm finally excited to see the dirt officially turned over. I feel like a gold shovel and throwing dirt, that's, somebody said something about that should take a little bit off the cost of the building because we all threw a little bit of dirt. The good news is that that old cold storage building that was on that property has been torn down. It already looks a million times better. We're really excited for that, that second garage. South County, our transportation numbers, our public transit ridership never really went down, and it continues to be recovering at a rate higher than most other areas. So that parking garage is instrumental in, in our, in our residents accessing transit. So really excited about that. I'm going to turn it over to Pat Fitzpatrick, our Chief Administrative Officer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In the interest of time, because we have quite a big presentation coming up on other business, I'm just going to refer to my CAO report, which is in the council packet.
All right. Thank you. Council President.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I serve on three regional meetings, three regional committees and boards, and we did not meet during this time. We did have a council workshop earlier, and it was 2025, 2025, six biennial budget presentations. And we also had a committee of the whole. We had the three neighborhoods, or two neighborhoods, we actually recognized today, voted on them. And I don't have any other updates, but I will go ahead and start with my council members here. Councilmember Troutner, please.
Thank you, Council President. I am Vice Chair of the Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority Governance Board, and I sit on that board along with Councilmember Larmor and Councilmember Boyd. We had our last meeting on September 18. We had a couple of proclamations. The first proclamation was for Firefighter Appreciation Month in recognition and to honor all of the firefighters that serve our community. Also, in recognition of raising awareness about the importance of emergency preparedness and the preparation of homes and communities for emergencies, we established the month of September as Emergency Preparedness Month. Do you know where you and your pet would go if you were told to evacuate in an emergency or disaster? Visit ReadyGov's evacuation page and learn how to stay safe and prepare a plan for your family. The board will also approve the 2025, 2030 six-year capital improvement plan and level of service policy updates at our next meeting tomorrow. We also set the hearing on the revenue sources, including the benefit charge for the year 2025. And that public hearing will be held at our meeting on October 16. And lastly, we are getting closer to having all the pieces in place to move forward with a new fire station on South 228th Street. So we've been planning for that for some time, looking very forward to that. Our next meeting is tomorrow evening at 5:30. And I also sit on the Regional Transit Committee, and we will meet on the 16th. That is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Troutner. Councilmember Michaux, please.
Thank you, Madam President. I have three meetings to report on. I serve on the King County Regional Law, Safety and Justice Committee. And we had a presentation on the School Safety Summit, which is a collaborative leadership addressing school safety. And it included a researcher from UW, King County, someone from the King County Executive Office, a mental health professional, and a King County Prosecuting Attorney Office staff member. And they checked out two different schools, districts, and looked into their school safety plan. Kent was invited to participate and declined. All right. I also serve on the Human Services Commission as the council liaison. We have wrapped up the grant process. So every year after we do grants, we have an after-action review. It's an evolving process, so we're always trying to make it better. So we got feedback from commissioners and the guest people who looked at the grants. And then lastly, we had a committee of the whole meeting, and there was a parks item. The downtown lots that we purchased next to Cresson Park, there is a temporary plan to clean up the area and put down grass and put in a gravel trail in the meantime, before we, we have to go through a whole public process, get opinions from the public and see what they want to do for the long term. So in the meantime, we're going to make it look at least nice down there. And that concludes, yes.
Councilmember Larmor, please.
Thank you, Council President. I am the subject matter chair for the Economic and Development Committee. And tonight, we had three items on the committee of the whole agenda. We had an appointment of Gail Haas to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. That was followed by an ordinance amending Title 15 of the Kent City Code to address behavioral health facilities. And then finally, we had our Shoreline Element presentation as part of our 2024 Comprehensive Plan update. All of that information is, you can tune into the committee of the whole recording to catch up on that, on those items. I also serve on the King County Disabilities and Aging and Disabilities Advisory Council, and we are meeting next week. So I'll have a report then. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Larmor. Councilmember Boyd, please.
Thank you, Madam President. I sit on the PIT committee. We haven't met since the last meeting, but I want to make sure 9:16 when the nomination went out. So have everybody raised their hand? I also want to make sure that, I think if the council president, we want to make sure that she get to see who's on the list, because if two of us apply for the same spot, none of us is going to get it. So I think if you apply, I think Tobias through the council president, make sure that we're not applying to the same spot. That way, we can make sure we are doing a good job of representing this city. So the deadline is 10/17. So make sure you got that done. Then on 11/13, it goes in front of the SCA Board for recognition. Also, there is a network, network dinner on 10/16, and that's going to be at the Renn Pavilion. So if you haven't signed up, please reach out to Tobias to make sure you attend. And the last thing is that, so you haven't heard that our executive director from, from PIT, we're in the process of looking for a new one. So I think that process is barely getting started to get a new executive director for PIT. So that process is just about getting started. And Madam President, that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Boyd. Councilmember Boyd, please.
Okay, yes. I also sit on the RFA Puget Sound Fire Committee and the Governance Committee. That's the only one I sit on. And I'm trying to change that right now because I submitted two forms through the SCA, hoping I'll get one of those. So make it either two or three that I sit on. And because of my fabulous councilmember child, and she always tells everybody, informs us of everything that we had talked about in the committee, I had to go out and find other information through other forms. So what I did, I went through and I read the emergency responder from the Puget Sound Fire, the fall edition, the fall publication, and it talks about FD cares. And it talks about back in 2010, the fire department began working on the development of the Fire Department Community Assistant Federal Education Service, also known as FD cares. After years in planning stages, system, system piloting, and testing nationwide, research cooperation with many local private health and care agencies, and assistance from the fire department and many other states, and support of the state legislators, the FD care program put its first unit into service on September 8 of 2014. This is to celebrate the 10th anniversary of this milestone. We're talking about the FD cares program. So I would like to congratulate Puget Sound Fire for reaching this milestone 10 years in the making. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Boyd. Councilmember Fincher, please.
Thank you very much, Council Chair. The King Conservation District has not had a meeting since we last met. MID will not meet, has not met either, but there is a survey available. MID, the Mental Illness and Drug Dependency Advisory Council, available in 21 different languages. And it's really important. It wants to know, there's $80 million that MID has through, for services, mental health and drug dependency services in the county. We want to know what you think, what's your opinion on access to service, on types of services available, what services, and this is not only if you use them, do you know that they're available and out there, available services available for youth, services for adults, specific types, inpatient, outpatient. So go to the King County and the MID, Mental Illness Drug Dependency Advisory Committee. Go to their page, and you will be able to get access to, to those QR codes to select the language that you want to hear in. And then the Arts Commission, there is not going to be a meeting in October. The next meeting won't be until November. I believe it's the 13th, the second Wednesday of November. But there, they do have their retreat, retreat scheduled for the 2nd of November, but their regular meeting will not take place. And for Public Works, tonight we talked, or we heard about a couple of Habitat and Flight Protection Grants that the city has received. And we also heard a report on commuter trip reduction. So that is it for us tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Fincher. Mayor Ralph, that ends our report.
All right. Thank you very much. Moving on in the agenda, the next item is public hearing. We have two public hearings this evening. So first, we will now hold the first public hearing on the 2526 biennial budget, including identified priorities for the use of opioid settlement funds. Paula Painter, our Finance Director, will give a presentation, and then I'll invite the public to provide testimony, written statements, and other evidence. Public input must relate to the subject of the public hearing, and councilmembers, you may ask questions during the hearing. If you're here to testify on this matter or present written statements or evidence, please sign up at the front. With that, we will go ahead and open the first public hearing on the 2025, 2026 biennial budget, including the identified priorities for the use of the opioid settlement fund. Public hearing is now open. And Paula, if you could make the presentation.
Great. Thank you very much, Mayor Ralph, Council President Corr, members of city council. This is our first public hearing on the 202526 budget. Mayor Ralph presented that budget at a special city council meeting on Monday, September 23. And since then, we've had an opportunity to get together a couple of times at workshops to discuss with the council aspects of that budget. So overall, the city budget for 202526 biennium is $884 million. And of that, 259.4 million of that is the city's general fund. When creating the baseline budget, the city applied a variety of assumptions to this. We looked at 3.6% increase for salaries for our employee, for the employees in 2025 and 2.5% in 2026. There will be no increases to the self-insurance plans in either year. The DRS, or the Department of Retirement Systems, we took contribution rates for the per system at 9.11%, and for the left system at 5.32%. Supplies increased by 2% as did the services, unless there was a contract, then the expenditure related to that matched what the contract had said. We also had some increases in our insurance allocations. That would be for 20% for workers' comp, 15% for liability, and no increase for property tax. And that's for year 2025. Some of the highlights of the 2026, 2526 budget is ultimately, this was a status quo budget. So anything that came forward, had to come forward with requests for, or with revenues to be able to cover the cost of that, or for reduction in expenditures. And the budget did do that. This budget does have This budget does have some increases in BNO tax, some of which had already been approved back in 2018. And a couple of smaller ones were related to this year's biennial budget process. In addition, there are 9.37 full-time positions that were added. And this includes two police sergeants, one police officer, and a corrections officer. There are contrib, you'll see some larger increases in some of our transfers out from our utility funds and our parks funds. And that's because we continued to fund the Kent East Hill Operations Center project that is currently going on. And then finally, we did increase, or did continue funding for the encampment cleanups here. The opioid settlement for 2025 and 26, we are expecting revenues of $174,000 in '25 and $142,000 in 2026. As you can see, for the revenues that we do receive in, we pay 10% of that in our admin fees. We'll also be allocating 75% of the resource coordinator from our community court program to that funding source, as well as $15,000 a year in supplies. And that ends my presentation on the first public hearing.
All right. Council, any questions for Paula? Okay. Kim, do we have anyone signed up to testify on this public hearing?
We do not.
Okay. Any written testimony been submitted?
None.
Okay. With that, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. The public hearing is now closed. All right. Moving on to our second public hearing, we will now hold the first public hearing on the 2025-2030 Capital Improvement Program. Paula will provide us with a presentation, then I'll invite the public to provide written testimony, comment, or other evidence. Public input, again, as in the first hearing, must relate to the public hearing in front of us. So with that, we will now open the public hearing on the 2025 to 2030 Capital Improvement Program. And Paula, if you could make the presentation.
All right. Thank you very much. Like the mayor said, this is the first public hearing on the 2025-2030 Capital Improvement Plan. The Capital Improvement Plan is a required component of the Growth Management Act that was passed by the state legislature back in 1990. To meet this requirement, the city creates a six-year Capital Improvement Plan. The plan provides projects along with recommended funding sources that would ensure that we are able to maintain our established levels of services. The CIP is adopted by ordinance and updates the city's comprehensive plan. The first two years of the plan are included in this 2025-2026 biennial budget. Of this $236 million Capital Improvement Plan, $90.9 million is included within the 2025-26 budget. That concludes the end of my presentation.
All right. Council, any questions for Paula? Kim, do we have anyone signed up to speak or any written testimony?
We do not.
All right. With that, a motion would be in order to close the public hearing?
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. The first public hearing on the 2025-2030 Capital Improvement Program is closed. All right. Moving on, item number seven is public comment. This is an opportunity to provide comment to council and the mayor on items that relate to business of the city of Kent. This is not an open public forum, and comments that do not relate to the business of the city of Kent are not permitted. And additionally, I want to remind everyone that Washington state law does prohibit the use of public comment period for the support or opposition to any political candidate or ballot measure. Kim, do we have any speakers signed up?
I have one person signed up to speak. I think it's Reka Reynolds on the Kent Library.
Wonderful. If you could come up and state your name and city of residence for the record. We do have a three-minute timer. We'll throw it up on the screen. And go ahead and turn it over to you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Mayor Ralph and council members. My name is Reka Reynolds, and I do reside in the city of Boddy Lake, but I do work with the King County Library System. And I am the, one of the regional managers with the system, and I oversee the Kent and the Kent Panther Lake libraries. So I wanted to take the opportunity to share some of the things that we're doing at the library that you might be interested in. So we do have, at the Kent Library, just down the street, we do have a welcoming center where we do have an ambassador. They are at our library on Tuesdays from 5:30 to 7:30. And the welcoming ambassadors, their job is to connect refugees, immigrants, and those who are new to the community with information and resources. So that is something that's been very well received by the community. And with them being there regularly as well, people know when to be able to find them. And then we also do have English language classes, which are called our ELL classes. Those take place on Tuesdays and Wednesdays from 5:30 to 7:30. And then these are the classes where our patrons, our citizens, are able to come, learn English grammar, reading, writing, and conversational skills. And they are taught by an experienced instructor from the Green River College. And we also have several storytimes, which are very popular. We have infant and young toddler storytime on Thursdays from 10:15 to 11, which is followed by family storytime from 11:15 to 12:15. And then on Fridays, now, we do have a Mandarin family storytime that takes place from 10:30 to 11:30. And that has gained quite a bit of popularity. And then I wanted to also talk about, I don't know if you've seen the bilingual book, but that is something that has been made possible through the King County Library System and the Kent Downtown Partnership. So if you have an opportunity to check that out. And then for Kent Panther Lake, we do have pajama storytime on the first Tuesday of the month, and that's from 7 to 7:30. And then we have family storytime on Thursdays, 10:15 to 11. And then game time, which takes place on Wednesdays from 3:15 to 4:45. And that is where ages five and up can come in to play board games and card games. And we do have, if you've been at the Kent Panther Lake Library, we do have a meeting room that we're able to open up the glass doors and really kind of be able to spread out. And then on Thursdays at the, well, actually, this coming up Thursday, we do have on October 10th from 4 to 5, there is a program for teens on UV resin trinket dishes. So that has already started to fill up very quickly. And then once a month on Saturdays at the Kent Panther Lake Library, we do have Lego block party that takes place from 11 to 12:30. And then just also, just some of the services that we have at the library. Our public computers are very well utilized, and that's something people come in to use on a daily basis. And we have printing, faxing. So those are still very popular. And of course, our library staff that is always there to answer any questions that anybody may have. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Boyce?
Wow, you got a lot going on. I'm glad to listen to it. Yeah. Most, I'm just curious, a couple of questions.
Oh, sure.
You got a lot of program. Which one is your most successful program? And then is this open to anybody and everybody?
Yes.
And then the last, how do you get the word out? I mean, you got some great stuff that you talk about. So how do you get the word out that people know about it?
Oh, definitely. I'd say some of our most popular ones are storytimes. They are very well attended. But our patrons look forward to our ELL classes, our English Language Learner classes. Those have filled up very quickly. We're also constantly looking for partnerships throughout the community to see what resources our community is needing and then bringing that into the library. And for publicity, we have, we do have our flyers that we publicize. We're trying to do some QR codes. We found that's not necessarily as accessible, though. So we're trying to have things print and online. And we actually have a new communications director for the King County Library System that's been doing a lot of work to help promote and really get the word out and really kind of brand us and let people know that the library is here for them.
I definitely feel your passion, so.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Fincher?
Hi, thank you. Would you tell us a little more? You said a welcome center?
Yes.
So languages, how does that part? Is there an interpreter, using the phones? What? Just explain a little bit more about that, please.
Oh, definitely. So we do have welcoming centers throughout the King County Library System. The closest one here is located at the Kent Library. And so we have what are called ambassadors who actually work with the King County Library System. So they are employed through us. And we're looking at the different languages in each of our communities where those welcoming centers are located and trying to match ambassadors that are able to speak those languages. So when people come in looking for resources, and it may be, how do I apply for things online? I'm trying to get my driver's license. I'm trying to apply for citizenship. And so helping them not only find those resources, but also being able to pair them if their first language is not English and if there's translation that's needed. And our ambassadors also work very closely together so that if we have a language that our ambassadors do not speak locally, we're able to reach out to one of our other locations.
Wonderful. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Nice to see all of you.
Thank you. All right. We are going to move on to the consent calendar. Consent calendar is a compilation of work that the city council has done at their Committee of the Whole meetings. Had presentations, been able to ask questions, make adjustments. And these items have passed out of Committee of the Whole without controversy. Tonight, we have items A through I on the consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero, and that consent calendar, items A through I, passes. All right. We are moving on to the main, the main show, the presentation for this evening. Under Other Business, we have a presentation regarding the purchase of a building for municipal services center and the plan for renovating Centennial Center for City Hall and Police Services. Joining us is our Parks Director, Julie Periscondola. Let's turn it over to you, Julie.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Ralph, Council President, and council members. Also sharing the presentation tonight, a little bit later towards the end, is Paula Painter, who is our Finance Director here at the city of Kent. Just a reminder, portions of what I plan to present today are a repeat of what you've already heard in past city council retreats. So bear with me on that one. I just really wanted to make sure that anybody who didn't attend those has the full context of the project on this one. We do plan, sorry, to present probably like 35 minutes, 40 maybe. I'll try and hurry. And then we're going to open it up for discussion and questions. I do believe I've got pretty much every player here that can answer any question you might throw at us on here. And admittedly, this is a complicated project. There's a lot of moving pieces of the puzzle to kind of make here. So our goal, and my goal with this presentation, I am going to present them in isolation first in each one of their segments, and then roll it all together for you at the end. And then really, our main objective with this particular project and decision is really trying to work through our major infrastructure challenges, which I'll share here in a minute, and what's really facing some of our highest need facilities. And our goal is to really ensure that the facilities are not just safe and efficient today, but also how are they evolving and safe and efficient for the future to come and how we serve our communities. So briefly, I just want to recap so everybody's aware of our, of what we do in our city facilities. Our city manages 25 city facilities, averaging over about 345,000 square feet indoor space. And they range in age from anywhere from 139 years old to 32 years old, which is our Centennial Center right across the street. That's our city hall. So, you know, any municipal space that staff work on traditional things, our recreation facilities, historic facilities, police facilities, courts, and our shops facilities. And a lot of these buildings really serve as our community hubs. People come in, and this is how we engage with our residents on some of these facilities. So it's obviously very clear for us to keep them invested and operating well. One of the things I wanted to clarify for those of you that aren't aware is kind of where our funding in facilities stops when it comes to these large investment practices. So when it comes to maintaining city facilities, we have two ways that we allocate larger budget impacts. And that's through our lifecycle funding and then, of course, capital funding. And so when you think of lifecycle, lifecycle maintenance covers scheduled replacements of critical systems or components, like an HVAC unit. So you're heating in your air conditioning. It might help work on elevator components, roof repairs, not a full roof replacement, but roof repairs, things like that. So it's just kind of minor. And we are funded just over $600,000 annually that we allocate to a bunch of projects throughout the year. And unfortunately, that does fall short with addressing all that we need to cover in our city facilities. And so, for example, let's say we need to do a roof repair in 10 years. We have backed that up, and we're saving a little bit of this investment money every single year until we finally have enough to replace a full roof structure as we move forward. So capital funding was introduced in 2019, first by Mayor Ralph. And then, thank you, council, you approved that. So every, for the most part, every budget, except for this current budget, we have had some additional capital money in there. It's not in this current budget because we got a lot of capital going on right now. We're trying to catch up. And so those projects, those work is on larger-scale projects, replacements, remodels, things like that. So if you think about a city building like your own home that you may own, you have to invest in your facility, in your house, to keep it operating and kind of moving forward. So if you think of major maintenance at your house, maybe you had a water heater replacement. Fair. You might have repainted the exterior, right? Capital investment is a complete remodel of, you know, your house. Maybe you added a whole new wing, you know, so it's those larger-scale types of things. So as I mentioned, in 2019 forward, we started, boy, that color coded very well, but we started getting city funding for capital. And so far to date, we have spent around $6.3 million of capital improvements, and we've completed that in our buildings. We're currently actively working on 7.1 million projects right now. And then one of the most critical decisions that occurred in 2022 through our mayor and through the council is the construction of our new East Hill Operations Center. That was a 30-year-in-the-making project and is really addressing some major significant gaps that we had on the maintenance and operations side. And so that project is active right now. And I know that you guys have all been out there. The other thing to think about, too, on city facilities, this is our current work plan, but they're also a very reactionary division and have to respond to emergencies that arise. An example that comes to mind near to my heart because it happened is when we had a vehicle run right in the front of the Riverbend Restaurant. It wasn't on the work plan. We had to pivot and hurry up and get contractors out there to get that facility and location secured. So they're also always reacting to that type of thing. So shifting now on how do we actually plan and maintain all these facilities? There's always been a structure in facilities. So back in 1998, we did have a guiding plan that was done at that point for condition assessment and really looked at 20 years forward. And that really helped guide us on how we actually spent our major maintenance funding and prioritize based on, you know, condition of facilities. That plan obviously expired. So in 2020, the city contracted with MANG Analysis and FCS Group to conduct a pretty detailed facility condition assessment and master plan for all of our city facilities. And the objective of this process is really to identify how can we maximize the operations of our buildings through being fiscally responsible. As we all know, Kent's lean and tight. We can't be wasting funds. We've got to really prioritize on some of our highest issues. And so there's two parts to this plan. The first one was a facilities condition assessment. And that really looked at kind of long, short-term and then long-term. And I'm going to talk a little bit more about that. And then operations and maintenance. Do we have the right staff? What's our process on routine repair? Because how we invest and do routine repair really helps extend or achieve our life cycles. And honestly, kudos to the facilities team because we have a lot of life cycles at the end of their life, but they're keeping them running right now to the best they can. So moving on to the condition assessment. So the condition assessment, when we went through and walked through, we had multiple trade professionals from specializing in mechanical, electrical, and plumbing. We also had civil, structural, and architectural engineers.[1725.31] structural and architectural engineers. They all walked through all the facilities and looked at all the components and so on. They reviewed floor plans. They looked at past condition assessments. They confirmed age and size. And so most of the condition assessments are based on the substructure. So your, your building envelope, your mechanical, electrical, plumbing, that type of thing. So the struggle with that is you could put, you know, $10 million into something and kind of see what, it doesn't change the outside aesthetics. It's just what keeps the air cool, the water running in the restrooms and so on. And so the cost provided in condition assessments are broken down into two ways, and we're going to talk about those now. So one is the observed efficiencies, and these are something that they highlighted on a component or something large that should be addressed within the next five years. Again, this was started in 2023, so we have a few years left. We're already behind because we have not started, but that there's also a cost. So these are already things we know are not good right now. And then the next one is predicted renewals, which begin in 2027. So we have a little bit of time here. And these are things that are going to be expiring in the future between the years of 2027 and 2043. Okay? And again, those are all based on what we've got. So it's not all gloom and doom because if you look at the chart on the bottom, this kind of breaks out the square footage of city facilities. And over half of our city facilities are in excellent and good condition. It's just this side of the chart on the, the ones that are really in the rough and the poor condition are some of our most high profile facilities. And so it's not all bad. We have some good stuff, but we need to keep investing in our facilities. One of the challenges that I really wanted to talk with the council about is really the sense of urgency to make these decisions now. I think in past times, we've had to make hard calls. And so we keep pushing these decisions down the road, similar to like we did with Park Capital. If you can't reinvest in your, in your facilities, then that's hard. And we have not significantly invested in our city facilities for a very, very long time, and we're seeing this impact now. And so if you look at this, base costs were escalated to start in '23. We haven't moved yet. It's '24, and now we're rolling right into '25. We're still not moving on this. So currently, right now, with costs escalated, we have an immediate observed deficiency total of 27.3 million. And this number is going to continue to escalate as we go forward. And so if you think about it, let's just pretend we don't do anything. We just, we continue to muddle along. We don't do anything. In, you know, 20 years later, we're going to be, we're still going to have the original, but now it's going to be 51 million more. Because if you think about a component or an asset on a lifecycle, think of a hill, brand new, you're kind of climbing up the hill. Things are fine. You probably don't need to do a lot of replacement. You're at the top of the hill now and you have to start, you know, changing elements, changing components, doing service more often. Now you're on the downhill and you're speeding up. You're, you're coming down, which means our assets are deteriorating faster and costs are escalating higher. And so it's kind of a double whammy when we're looking at escalation of our, of our city facilities. And so that's just on the immediate observed deficiencies. We have predicted renewals coming, which we know is going to happen in the next six years, seven years, 10 years. And that's, that's a number of 128.4 million. That is already forecasted in the model. They already added escalation, but these are base costs only. And so that's the other thing to think about. And so, you know, we have some pretty high profile facilities, which we're going to focus on here next, which is City Hall and the Kent Police Department. And if we can address those now, we're saving almost 30 million of future need that we can focus on other areas. And so it's a decision that will be really helpful. The other thing, and I've tried to in certain areas, add total cost. When we had the work done by our consultants, it was a base construction cost only. So that's no design, that's no contingency, sales tax and so on. So these costs are actually higher than you see unless I highlight that I purposely escalated. Okay? So a deeper dive, like I mentioned, we have two critical kind of facilities for multiple reasons of why we really need to think through how we want to address them now. And that's our City Hall Building, which is the building we're in right now. And then the Kent Police Department Headquarters, which is right next door to us. So you all know this. This is our City Hall Camp. We like to call it City Hall Campus. So you've got the Kent City Hall Brick Building. Across their way is the Centennial Center, which is the white building. Kent Police Department, we have our parking garage, and then we have the annex kind of tucked in the back. And the annex is currently occupied by our IT Department. Okay? And so just some history here. The original City Hall Building was built in 1971, and it's 53 years old this year. It's 33,000 square feet. It still does have the old jail, which is filled with police evidence, which many of you have seen. And it's got the shooting range up at the top. It's pretty programmatically obsolete. It's a wood frame brick structure, not really in full code compliance. You know, it looks beautiful. It's beautiful brick, but it's got a lot of challenges with it. Currently, between 83 and 85 employees work on the City Hall side of the facility. And you can see the list of the departments there that all play a role on this side of the building. City Council Chambers is probably our highest, most visible use in, in City Hall because it's where our residents directly work with our council. We have our commission meetings in here. And so this is the direct kind of liaison here. We have had several capital improvements, believe it or not, at City Hall. It's just you don't see them because they're all kind of hidden. Council Chambers is one. We did some remodel here, right? And so on. So going a little bit deeper into City Hall needs. So City Hall has an estimated 13.6 million in instant immediate observed efficiencies, another 5.2 million of coming soon, and that totals around 18.8 million. And so let me explain this chart because I wanted to describe it a little bit more, is depending on how we package our capital facility projects, because chances are, we're not just going to do electrical improvements at City Hall. We might do multiple and make that a bid package, right? So sometimes projects might be pretty easy. They don't, they're not very complicated. They only need about 5% of design-ish added costs, maybe a less contingency. But we might have other projects that are a little higher risk. They need more drawings, more design. We're opening up walls. We're not sure. We might have to have a 20% contingency on that. So what I did for council is just give you a range. You could pretty much spend anywhere from 21.6 million at City Hall or all the way up to 27.2 in today's dollars. And so I just wanted to give you that range. It's not each column. It's just pick one depending on the project. And so you'll see that kind of chart throughout. A little bit deeper dive on City Hall, immediate observed efficiencies. It just gave you a chart, probably a little hard read, but hopefully you can see that there. And I have information if there's future questions. Highest issue here on observed deficiency, 13.6 million, is our heating, ventilation and air conditioning system is done. It's at its end of useful life. And then the next one in line is our superstructure, which is more seismic protection. And that's kind of there. And it just goes down from there. Predicted renewals, same thing. These are issues that will start from 2027 forward. Biggest issue here we have is our lighting and wiring upgrades. We have significant electrical issues. And then some building envelope issues with our windows and sealants and so on. And so that's around 5.2 million. And again, that's base cost higher if you're adding full total cost. Couple just, I want to make, you know, in case I have, you know, city staff listening in on this conversation, I don't want anybody to panic. We did have a structural condition assessment completed back early 2024. And then we actually did do seismic retrofitting in 20, in 2002, a year after when we had the big Fort Nisqually earthquake. So we definitely did some shoring up of our facilities. One of the things, which is really unique that I learned when I came here, is City Hall is really three buildings that are kind of connected. And so what would happen in a seismic event is they, they might sway and they might kind of bang off of each other. We do know that it would last, it would be stable in a seismic event, but then instantaneously, we'd have to audit and survey to see if it's safe for city staff to come in. And it's very true that we might be done. And we don't want to be in a very reactionary panic situation where, oh my gosh, where would City Hall go? We have all this seismic stuff we have to do for the building. And so that's definitely a concern. So it's not panicking right now. If something happens, we'll be okay. But right after, it could be very risky. So it's very hard to know for sure. The other thing we're seeing in City Hall, as well as a lot of our facilities, just the rise of escalation that we need to do the infrastructure safety and staff safety. So that's staff cameras, key fobs, those kind of things to protect our city assets. And then, as you all know, City Hall Campus has a lot of challenges with public parking and staff parking and when everybody's here and it's pretty full. Switching to the other facility is our Kent Police Headquarters Building, which was constructed in 1974. So it's 50 years old today. Kent Police occupied that building in 1991, which I graduated high school in 91, so that's a very long time. It was originally a library that was converted slightly to fit police needs, but I think it's fair to say it never really fit police needs. They just kind of squeezed in where they could. And they've been working on a split operations ever since then. So what is that, 33 years, I think, where they have their police headquarters, they have some of their detectives and staff in Centennial Building, some in substations. And so they're kind of all over the place. They have some evidence at City Hall. So they do, and they have a very separate operations that makes it very challenging. They don't have space here for major emergency operation incidents. When you have rural crisis management, you have to manage. They've run out of space very clearly for additional workspace and sworn personnel. They're doing shared desk space and things over there, trying to make it work. That's, you know, none of us have that challenge. It's just, that's what they've been dealing with this, this whole time. And then part of the challenge with new laws coming with police retention of records is high, anywhere from 99 years to in perpetuity. And when you have as many cases as you do, it's a lot of files, it's a lot of evidence you've got to maintain. And so we've, we've seen that, you all have seen that and where we're at. And currently, right now, in their last two accreditation cycles, they've been warned that they have to fix this problem with some of their record retention and how they handle their evidence. I did want to share, at Keyhawk, which we're building, they will have some good space out of Keyhawk for evidence retention as well as in this model. And so we're getting there. We just have to make some of these moves first. Same thing. You saw this chart before with City Hall. This is just the Police Headquarters Building. They're a little less because they're smaller in size. They have around 6.3 million of needs from, you know, immediate needs to predicted renewals coming. So in the end, you could spend anywhere from 7.8 to 9.7 million. So already, you're looking at almost 30 million of need for just these two facilities as we're kind of moving forward. Little bit of detail for them. At their place, observed efficiencies, their heating, ventilation and air conditioning, all those units are at old, old kind of levels. Think of, you know, years, 50 years old HVAC. And then they have more electrical, their electrical issues rise higher than City Hall's. Predicted renewals, same thing. These are things that are coming. They have about a 2.4 million base need, and that is anywhere from lighting, wiring, electrical to exterior wall, superstructures and so on. So that's kind of where we're at with theirs. One of the things I wanted to just note as we continue on in this discussion is really the decisions that the council has to make is decisions that are going to impact the next 50 years. And it's just kind of important to understand that it's not a right now. It's going to help right now, but it's also going to allow future. And so all those people that have kicked the can down the road to your, you know, I'm hoping that it's going to stop now and that we can fix some of this stuff for our future generations. Because when City Hall was built in the 70s, you know, we had, we were serving a population of 16,600 and we had 138 FTEs, right? And so since then, we've grown significantly. We now serve 140,000 and we have 753 FTEs. Now, in the middle, we did add, of course, the Kent Police Headquarters and Centennial, but it still has not kept up with the growth that we have already in the past, but also moving forward now into the next 50 years. And so the only other thing I'd like to say on this, I'd be remiss if I didn't, is it's just important to understand that while we're making decisions now on these two facilities, we still have a significant maintenance backlog that will focus on that after we kind of tackle these two projects. So just keep that kind of in the back of your mind. So building for tomorrow, I just wanted to make sure and remind everybody how we got here. This is, this wasn't an easy process, and we tried a bunch of different models and worked with our council and each other to try and figure this out. So in 2023, we presented at a city council retreat, all of this stuff, and we did talk about these two buildings. And there was three options we proposed to council. One, we just don't do anything. And we wait, and if something breaks, we react at that point. The second option was we keep both buildings, but let's put a little bit of money into them and hopefully they'll stay a little longer. Or three, you know what? Let's just demo City Hall and the Kent Police Department and then build a new one, shift all City Hall staff into Centennial. You all agreed that option number three sounded reasonable and asked us to continue to explore that option a little bit further. So we did. Admittedly, we've been focused pretty heavily on Keyhawk, but during that time, we did establish new space standards for, for the city so that we have equity across the board now. We met with every department to assess their individual workspace needs, number of employees, any kind of growth they need over the future. We worked with an outside consultant just to make sure, can City Hall even fit in Centennial? We can, but there's issues with that. As we dove deeper, we realized there's quite a few bit of problems here, and the, the cost impacts were a little bit more than we were comfortable with. For example, this City Hall Building would need to be demo first. And imagine that. You're talking a long time. And so where would all these staff go, right? You know, for this temporary kind of solution? KPD, they can't go anywhere until something new is built for them. So they'd be stuck. How do you move detectives out of Centennial when everybody's kind of moving in there, trying to remodel? That's a challenge. If we don't use maybe the existing KPD building into a new council chambers, we'd have to put council chambers to city, to the Centennial Center, taking further space. And we're not even sure we could even accommodate that, plus all the staff moving in there. Chambers and council meetings, they'd have to be held offsite for anywhere from two to four years. Maybe at the Commons or Senior Center, that's rough. And how do we do that? And how do we manage? Significant construction would occur on City Hall. Staff would need to move in and out multiple times. And that's, that's the real pressure point is where, where are they going? And where are we housing temporarily while we're displacing everybody? That was just cost, 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 cost. A new building at City Hall Campus will require piles just because of liquefaction underneath the surface and then unknown cost implications and transitions. And so we were like, okay, this isn't going to work. The more we got into it. So in May of this year, at City Council Retreat, we shared all this information and said, we have a different idea. And this idea is what hap, why don't we move all kind of non-police staff, all just general city services, some of the departments aren't even necessarily public facing into a new building, right? Let's let, once we move, let the police department have the upper floors of, of Centennial Center and put a new city council chambers on the first floor of Centennial. And at that point, it was like, hmm, that's got, that's got options. And so what that would do, we'd have significant savings. We wouldn't have all this kind of move around as we're talking about. It would alleviate the move in and out. It would allow for more room and long-term growth because if the city staff, City Hall staff moved into Centennial, we're pretty much packed at the Raptors there. Growth opportunities would be a little bit risky. And work improvements would occur at the new building. So we'll just do new building work. No, everybody's still happening. You're still meeting here. There's no major disruptions, right? So people can still access their government. There'd be a ton of synergy, which we'll talk about later, about having us all on the same floor. I chuckle, like, in order to go across to talk to my colleagues in ECD or Public Works, I gotta go down three floors, across the thing, up three floors. It's just a lot versus just walking next and talking to your neighbor. Less construction impacts at City Hall. It'd be a lot of noise here, you know, if we're building a new, new building. Increased safety, parking capacity and so on. And then the police department and the council chambers, it's super important to our mayor and to us and to you that council stays right here in the heart of the city and a heart of our downtown. And we could do that. We could honor that commitment in this new model. Our police department would maintain their presence downtown, also important to many. The city could still use the first floor here. We'd still have council meetings here until all the new stuff's figured out. So you wouldn't have these weird, where are we going to do council meetings at? The IT Annex, which we'll talk a little more, would be transitioned into KPD evidence housing as well as impound lot. And it would allow a little bit more breathing room now and some room for KPD to grow. So centralizing for success, the next step is where are we going? What are we going to do? How do we do this, right? So a lot of benefits to centralizing. I won't read them all, but you know, we'd have enhanced collaboration and communication, better operational efficiency. We're already talking about looking at how do we structure kind of the new layout by function, not necessarily by department, to break down a lot of those kind of silo walls. Cost savings for sure, which I'll share here towards the end. Improved public access. I don't, I'm sure Kim could confirm how many times people come in one building, but yet they're supposed to be over in the other building. It gets very confusing on what services and what building. So you go to one, now you got it all in the one place. You have energy efficiency and sustainability. We are reducing, you know, additional buildings, streamlined security and safety and obviously space optimization. So we began searching for a new home, and this new home had to accommodate about 350 staff positions is kind of what we're estimating. And that includes current staff as well as some growth capacity after meeting with each director. And that includes all of the departments that you see here. Of course, all the mayor's office, city clerk, city communication, multimedia, the print shop, finance, HR, IT, legal, a portion of the Parks Department, a portion of Public Works, because a lot of our staff is external, and then, of course, our race and equity office. And so we are super happy to say that we, we definitely believe we've found the right building and the right fit for us. And that's the KCP Building located in the Center Point Development off of 60th Avenue in Kent. It is owned by BECU, the Boeing Employees Credit Union, and it's currently unoccupied. It's got about 81,464 square feet and about a little over five acres. And you can kind of see the, how do I do a little pointer? There we go, right there. You can see like the, the kind of the layout footprint of the building. It was built in 19- It was built in 1983 but renovated in 2003. And I know that you all have done tours out there, so you know what it looks like. It's got significant space in regards to our data center and technology needs, so really great there. It's eight miles, it's a, it's an eight-mile drive longer, about 3.1 miles from City Hall Campus. We do need to remodel, it's not quite move-in ready, but we do not need to remodel the entire facility. Restrooms will be the same, there's a lot of things that'll be the same, conference rooms. It's really just the staffing spaces that need some remodel work out there. BECU placed it on the market for 14.2 million. When this came to our table, it was pretty much all hands on deck to decide whether this was reasonable, was it fair? Obviously, when you're a government, you have to use your property differently than maybe a private or a business. So, we had to do our due diligence. So, we did utilize a consultant and do a double check on space capacity. So, can we actually fit 350 spots in there? Yes, we can, that was confirmed. We don't have a final design, but we do have enough confidence we can fit. We utilized consultants and technical staff to do property inspections of the facility, making sure we aren't losing, you know, leaving a 20 million challenge problem and getting into another one. There were some things that did come up, which we'll talk about, which is, the roof is at its end of its useful life. There's some HVAC needs, the backup generators and chiller systems need some upgrades. Not, we'll talk about that because we did bring our price down because of that. We did obtain a property appraisal, which helped us, assist us in valuing the property on what we wanted to offer. And again, that helped us talk about some of the major maintenance that we still needed to do on the sale price. We did complete a Phase 1 environmental site assessment report, so nothing came up on that. Public Works completed a review of the underground infrastructure and other infrastructure onsite. And then, our IT staff, along with their consultants, went out and inspected the technology infrastructure just to make sure there was, you know, cable come into the building and so on. And then, our legal department, of course, completed a pretty comprehensive review of the covenants, conditions, and restrictions, just to make sure. There are some issues on that, but we feel pretty confident we can modify those covenants. So, we're feeling really confident. Made the decision, talked with council, and we did put in a offer and it was accepted from BECU. So, we were successful in negotiating the actual sale price down from 4.2 million to 11.25. We did waive all the contingencies only because we went really deep to make sure we don't have any risk on this facility. The offer does include the purchase of the building, the land and everything inside, so all furniture, fixtures, and equipment. That's huge, if you guys know all the stuff that's in there. That means we don't have to rebuy conference tables and chairs and all that good stuff. It includes a cooperation provision that'll really help us when we start shifting around fiber, cable, any kind of questions on there, major equipment, and so on. And if closing, once closing occurs, then we'll start working on preparing the building for remodel work. We, there will be a motion to approve the purchase at our, a special meeting on October 8th, council meeting, which you know is coming, meeting all terms and conditions. If council approves that on the 8th, closing is anticipated to be November 7th. And then, I did just want to confirm, all of the desk space and everything that's in there, our goal is to try and use it in the building. If we can't, we have a lot of buildings that have old equipment, so we'll just swap out. So, we don't plan on eliminating that. We're going to go in there and kind of highlight all the things we think we want to keep. So, we definitely are going to keep that and kind of get rid of some of the older stuff. And then, if approved, after transition, we got it, staff. This is another building, we want to try and look at solar panels for the roof and some other really neat, green, and sustainable initiatives. So, we'll look at new grants on that, so once we kind of get established. And then, I do just want to just give a shout out to the Boeing Credit Union, they were great community partners, you know, a lot of their customers are our residents. And so, they were really wonderful to work with and really supportive in the process. So, shout out to BECU as well. So, moving on to just a couple more things in the police and then I'll pass it off soon. So, again, I just wanted to confirm, we are keeping City Hall and police in this model right in the downtown core, we know that's important. And as well as the Annex Building, I've already highlighted, city council chambers and council is anticipated to be on the first floor. And then, there will be a portion that will be the Kent Police Department's kind of front counter, so we'll separate that. All the upper floors in Centennial, floors 2 through 4, will be exclusively police. On the parking structure also, the upper floors, obviously with all their needs, all of their vehicles and so on, will be on the upper floors. The first floor is still going to remain open for public parking and use for council meetings and things like that. And again, once, and if council approves on the 8th, then we're going to start a lot more aggressively planning with our police department partners and making sure they get the space they can design and need over there. Couple of things I'm just going to highlight a little bit is the advantages of centralized because, you know, Chief Adia and his team have been running a decentralized shop for a very long time. Now, they're all in one area, so obviously, they're going to be improved communication and process points there. They, you know, we're looking at having modern technology for them as moving forward, special training rooms, debriefing, they will have a fitness space because they need that there. We are still keeping all of our downtown presence in proximity to local businesses. We are increasing, you know, you'll still see police officers coming out of this facility and so on, which always helps downtown. Strong police presence and kind of moving forward there. I'll let you guys kind of read that. The other thing, you know, is looking at shared spaces for both inter and intra departments. So, we anticipate if city staff come to the new Centennial Building, there'll be desk space for city staff to just, you know, start typing and working there. On the flip side, if our police department officers or staff need to come to the municipal building, they'll have staff there, you know, little spots, you know, for them, kind of like hot desking areas, so they can have staff. So, we kind of are looking at that exchange back and forth. Really kind of looking at remaining downtown. It's our commitment to making sure that we keep that presence downtown, not just for police, but obviously for city council. And really, one of the coolest things, it's a milestone moment. We've been talking over and over for decades about how to help our police department be in a centralized space. And it's really exciting that we actually have a viable opportunity now to go ahead and give them that because while they're working, it's very hard to work over and like sharing spaces and things. It's a very complicated area. So, just to give you a perspective, currently, right now, they're in an 18,000-square-foot facility. They do have some dedicated space in Centennial of 8,405 square feet, so I'm not talking about the substations. They are currently operating out of a 26,405-square-foot kind of space, right? If you look at it that way. If they have Centennial now, all the, you know, that's a 71,600-square-foot space. They already have the detective space. We're going to withdraw the space needed for a new chambers and some council offices. So, that really gives them a new square footage of 60,000, almost 61,000. So, that's almost 35,000 more square feet than they have right now. And that will set, you know, solve a lot of kind of their internal operational problems, which is awesome. So, one of the things we did, just try and do diligence as we were thinking about this, we know it's a big decision for council to make and for us to make this move for our community. So, we thought, let's study what our peers are doing. You know, are we off on thinking a remodel versus a building and so on? And so, I have two detailed case studies in the Moore. So, the first one, I think many of you might have heard about the City of Mercer Island Challenge. Ironically, they're almost the closest to our situation because what they were doing is a facilities condition assessment and they were walking around with their team of, you know, trained people when they noticed some dropped tiles and things like that and was like, hmm, I think these might have suspected asbestos in it. Sure, sure enough, testing came back, asbestos was in the building, their City Hall building. They did confirm it wasn't airborne, but it was all their kind of infrastructure. So, they had to do a permanent closure of City Hall. Unanticipated, they were starting to do the right thing and then bam, this happened to them. And now, they're working out of portables. And so, it's a very challenging situation for, for them up there. They are working towards building a, a joint Public Works Building that's going to have their police department, Public Works, emergency operation, and some other divisions, but they don't have a full solution yet. They're still working through it and that's, that's scary and that's a risk and that, that could happen, right? The other one was the City of Fort Worth. Admittedly, they're on a way grander scale than the City of Kent, way big. It's a big city, but what they did is they merged 13 separate buildings into one City Hall. We did have a good conversation with them, their team and their consultant. And all the things they were dealing with were exactly what we were talking about, just on a different scale. So, one of the things they originally planned to do was a 450 million new eight-story City Hall. And that was the goal. And they decided against it after looking at feasibilities and things like that. Their old Pier 1 headquarters building, remember the old Pier 1 stores? They decided to buy that building instead. And they saved, their final output was 226 million. So, they saved almost half by going for a remodel. And one of the things they shared with us is hindsight, they probably wouldn't have fit in an eight, in an eight-floor kind of building and they're really grateful they did think this way. The other thing which, you know, you don't think about is about employee retention. You know, think about that with police recruitment, think about that with just city staff recruitment, is they had a pretty aggressive leave rate at the City of Fort Worth. It was almost 28% staff were leaving annually. And so, after the building and all the hype on the new building, now their, their leave rate's way less because people are somewhat excited to come to work and so on. And so, there's just a lot of really neat synergies that happen with that. I'll let you guys read this later, but this is the same thing where we looked at all local things. So, City of Federal Way is currently in the same boat as we are. They're trying to decide, do they move City Hall? Do they build a new City Hall? So, they're in the middle of that. City of Puyallup is currently working on a plan for a new public safety building. City of Lacey actually just broke ground on a new two-story police station and that project total is 61.5 million for a population of 60,000. The City of Bainbridge Island, they merged into, they did more kind of like a, like a civic center where your police and your courts are kind of all the same. And they did a lot of remodeling as well, they moved into an existing building, so a little smaller scale. City of Eugene, same thing, they decided to repurpose some property. City of Tukwila, they built a new, so they chose the new side of the route, but their price tag was 70 million, looking at that. And then, of course, City of Marysville finished theirs and they finished at 53.8 million. So, not all apples to apples, you got to look at the size, you got to look at the year, but that gives you an idea, the trend in government is to do remodeling versus the new construction because there's just such a high cost on that. So, I'm, now I'm going to roll into the price and then I'm going to spring Paula up. So, hopefully, I've set you up. So, what I first wanted to do is if you take us all the way back to the 2023 option of, hey, let's just build a new city, the new police department building and demo these and so on. That's what this model is. It's really difficult and I want to put a caveat out there. We have no final design, so what we had to do is do cost estimating with just a square foot rate. So, I have three columns here. The gray column is what we're shooting for, that's the target. So, if finance tells us our cap is 50 million, that's what our cap is. And if that means we've got to do some additional work in later years, well, that's what we're going to do. But I did want to just protect ourselves and say, hey, it's a range. And so, it's not all these columns. So, you'll see it's this first column, which is our first target. So, we put a $600 square foot price tag on building a new building and adding a 10% contingency, that makes a $47 million facility. Well, then, you've got to demo City Hall and KPD, you've got to design it all. And then, move-in prep and all that is like moving, digitizing documents, getting all your, you know, tech, all that kind of good stuff. So, that puts a new price tag of about 73.7 million estimated. At the same time, that's not even finishing the project because we, that's just a new building. We still have to move all City Hall staff into Centennial and get that remodeled. So, that square footage, again, because some city staff would stay, obviously, in Centennial, so smaller square foot remodel. So, that one, we put a 250 square foot price tag on, it's a lot less than new construction. Same type of, you know, contingency sales tax and so on. So, that's an additional 7.7 million. And so, that makes that, that option three that we talked about way back in 2003, almost 81.4 million. That's definitely not effective. And so, we, now looking at the final option that we're asking council to consider on the, meeting on the 8th, is purchasing and remodeling the KCP Building at Centerpoint for a new City of Kent Municipal Building. And again, using the same 250 square foot, focusing on the gray column there. The remodel rate would be about 18.7 million sales tax, so construction total would be about 20 million. Eight, you know, design work and then the building purchase, as you can see there, is 11.250. So, if you see all those initial building repair right there, those are the items that we are going to repair before we even start kind of getting in there. And that means when we get into that building, all of the major infrastructure systems are solid. And we don't have a lot of that, those issues coming up that obviously City Hall would have. Same thing, so the part one of this kind of project and approach is about 42.5 million. But, we still have to remodel Centennial for the chambers and for our police department. And that's this next part, which is the top kind of chart. So, you'll see there, the square footage there is 25,687 that would be subject to remodel, even though that's a large, you know, facility. There's going to be a lot of spaces that aren't going to be remodeled in Centennial, right? So, it's basically what can we kind of fit in there? That cost for the remodel is 10.5 million. So, if you look at the last chart at the bottom, the gray part, the municipal services building remodeled by purchase, et cetera, is 42.5 million. The chambers and council offices in the Kent Police Department remodel of Centennial is 10.5 million. That makes the total project cost at 53.1 million. We have already targeted, we had funding available of 9.4 million that was addressing City Hall and some of these other things that we're going to put towards this building. So, that gives us a need for financing, which I'll bring Paula up here in a second, of 43.7 million, okay? One of the things that is important to understand is the difference between building a new building and doing it this way. It's a $30 million savings. On top of that, you have already jumped ahead and you eliminated 30 million of a kind of expected need. And you know, part of it is like, you're going to have to repair City Hall regardless, if, you know, whichever way you go. And that alone is, you know, a $30 million project. So, that's where we're looking at on the cost. I can say confidently with everybody in the room and my directors here, this is a united decision by all of us. And we've worked really hard to double-check every possible thing and really believe that this is the right thing to do. So, my part was easy, so I'm going to bring Paula up and she's going to explain how we're going to pay for it all. So, Paula. And then, I'm going to wrap up with next question and then we'll have questions.
All right, thank you very much, Julie. Okay, so, before we get into the discussion about how are we going to pay for it, there's something I think we, we have to first look at and that is the difference between capital funding and operating funding. Because so often, people see these big price tags for construction projects like this and they say, hey, wait, we should be doing that because we need this instead. When, with our operating budgets, those are like our general fund where we pay our employees, we handle things, that's operating. These are ongoing funds, we have designating, designated funding source for this. Our capital funding is also designated. And that is, right now, we have a capital resources fund that handles our general capital. That capital resourcing fund has revenues that are earmarked and dedicated for capital projects and only capital projects. We can't be, can't be using them for those ongoing expenses. So, our capital resources fund, we do have some property tax in there. We have real estate excise tax in there. We do have streamlined sales tax there for a little bit longer. We have managed to grow our fund balance in our capital resources fund and then we have some miscellaneous revenue. We do in that fund too have some ongoing commitments. We have a debt payment that we're making right now. Our debt will be done after 2037. So, and we'll see a significant decline in our debt service payments after 2032. We do have, according to an ordinance that we have in place, dedicated funding for our streets, our IT and our parks, and also showware center. We want to make sure that we keep stronghold of that because that is really the foundation of our capital programming to make sure we have that minimal, minimum enough capital to be able to continue funding these things that we need to be able to fund to keep moving forward. In addition, we want to keep in mind that we do have some other needs that we fund out of our capital resources fund, whether that's for IT or parks or other street projects that do come up. And I'll show you a spreadsheet in a moment that kind of talks about what that's all going to look like. So, as you know, Julie showed you a range of prices that this could cost. We all know that nothing ever comes in exactly how we think it's going to be. So, what I've done is I've pulled three different sets of numbers. Is if we need to finance 50 million, 55 million, or 60 million dollars, what would that annual debt service look like? And so, it's going to be anywhere from 2.95 million to 3.57 million. For what I'm going to show you today, I'm going to pull the 55 million dollar number[1785.28] For what I'm going to show you today, I'm going to pull the $55 million number for my presentation, but any one of those three would technically work in this scenario. This is a little bit small, and so, and I'm kind of regretting that I didn't bring a printed piece of paper, so it's going to test my eyes just as much as it will yours. Ultimately, with this fund, we, we have a fairly decent fund balance. We're estimating to end 2014 with a 14.2 million dollar fund balance in, in the fund. We do have all of our revenues that come in, I think, and our standard revenues, standard expenditures, I've talked about all of those just now, but what I really want to draw your attention to are those highlighted lines there at the bottom. So first and foremost, if, we do have some money for Quahog that we are going to be returning. The reason we're going to do that, thank you very much, the reason that we are going to end up doing that is because we will need to fund a little piece of the Quahog in order to help make the cash flows work the way we want it to work. So we're going to return almost 3.8 million dollars back to this fund. You can see the orange line is the anticipated debt service payment for 55 million dollars. I'm going to get back to that line in just a moment. The line below this is the anticipated capital projects beyond what we have as an organization committed to, so the streets, the parks, the IT, anything else that may come up. You'll see that there's some big numbers in there. We know that earlier today, we talked a little bit about the JDE project that we're earmarking dollars. So some of those, you'll see some big numbers because we know we have some big projects coming. But, but that is still anticipated projects above and beyond what is earmarked through our ordinances and other commitments that we have. When we go to issue debt to be able to cover this project, I, I am going to propose that for years 25 and 26, that we tap into our general funds, fund balance. If you guys recall, for up to about 5 million dollars, if you guys recall back in, boy, when we first presented the budget, I kind of walked you through some of where we've been before and, and some of the challenges that we've had where we didn't have a fund balance before, and the work that we've done to build the fund balance, but we have built it. And going through COVID, we prepared for the worst, and actually, our sales tax came in way better than expected, so we were, and we weren't able to spend it because we weren't fully operational. We were able to build up some of this fund balance. We can't use the fund balance on ongoing expenditures. We need to be using these on one-time things, and this really is the type of thing that that would be ideal for. By taking up to 5 million dollars for the first two years of debt service for this out of that fund balance, it helps us to maintain a solid fund balance within that capital resources fund. As you can see, looking out to 2034, we would have estimated a 3.5 million dollar fund balance. Our threshold that we like to have, or the target that we like to have in that fund is a 1.5 million dollar fund balance as we move forward. So I feel as though this would still be keeping us in a good spot. It would give us an opportunity to do what those dollars are really meant for, and that is to help move our organization forward, and we were very lucky to be able to have a council that made such great decisions to make sure that we could have that here at a time like this, and when we're looking at this. That is all I have on the financing piece, and so I'll turn it back over to Julie, but I'll stay up here if there's questions about financing as well, once we wrap this up. Thanks, Paula.
So we're there, we made it. So just the next step, no decisions today. Obviously, we shared a lot of information. If there's even questions today, we're happy to take them, but also during the week, as you're rereading the presentation, we're all here available for questions. The motion for consideration of the new building will happen on October 8th. I was thinking seven, Kim, just confirm, so what time is it? Five, sorry about that. It's five, you guys, not seven. And then I also want to just remind council, we're going to be involved with you 24/7 on this project. So one of the things we're going to do is hire an overall consultant to help us manage it. There's a lot of moving parts and timelines and sequencing we have to do. We have to continue to refine the project, the scope and the timelines. We can lock that number tighter than just a square footage rate. We do need to work towards identifying longer-term maintenance and operation needs for both buildings, so while we are being more streamlined, we are adding more square footage to our system. We have to finalize, of course, the finance strategy, which you'll be involved in that, you'll be involved in a ton of different selections, and then we have to work towards a, a full implementation of a staff engagement strategy, because this is a big thing for all of our city staff to shift resources like this. So lots of next steps, lots of moving parts. I feel like we just did a major heavy lift in all this, but it's literally just starting, so. And then, so we're all here, if you have any immediate questions that you'd like to ask.
All right. The box just lit up.
Okay.
So that was really fast. Councilmember Troutner followed by Boyce and then Michelle.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, thank you to everyone who put this together in a really short amount of time. I know, you know, with the mayor's leadership, with all the departments coming together, and then making sure council was aware of what was happening, and being able to tour the facility and ask some of our questions beforehand, I think has been really important to help us get to where we are. And I don't know, we don't have an answer to this, but I would imagine that in the long run, as we work through the budget over the next several years, that we will find cost savings and doing this, some efficiencies that will actually help with our budget moving forward. I mean, do you anticipate that? That might be a Paula question. But, I mean, we're talking about, you know, maintenance for the building. I would think that this will be more efficient, there will be having everybody in one space. I don't know if it would be a significant amount of savings in the long run, or if we'll see some kind of difference.
I think, yes, there'll be savings in some areas, but you, but there will also be some additional cost in other areas, and I think Julie touched on that just a little bit, because we're now going to be growing our square footage, so there'll be more care that will have to be taken care of, so, you know, making sure things get cleaned and the maintenance is getting done. So I think in the end, yes, you're going to definitely see some improvements and some efficiencies in some areas, but you'll see some additional costs in other areas.
But things like, as everybody consolidates into one building, probably the need for fewer copiers and the leases on those, and those kinds of things, I think they're, that we will definitely see.
In addition to add on to that, additional storage that we pay externally for, we don't need that now. I know in talking with our IT team, we, we pay for outside storage of data, we don't need to do that anymore, so that's what we need to come back at and show you. Here's the expense increase, but here's all the savings at the same time, and then here's kind of the net, so we've got some work to do on that.
All right. Councilmember Boyce.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Great job by the team. I just think, you know, there's a fine line between, you know, as we move into this year, really 50 million, or 55, or 60 million. I think there's a fine line between must-have and nice-to-have, right? You know, and I think, I hope that the staff were, you know, don't take too many shortcuts, but don't go over it, right? You know, because once you're in it, you're in it, right? You're not going to have the knuckles and dime to be able to do other things. So I just hope when we look at this year, we look at it from a holistic approach, and make sure the thing that, you know, we need to have, you know, 15, 20 years, you know, that we take those into consideration. But great job by the team, so thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Michelle.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Julie, I just want to thank you for your presentation. I know it was a lot of work, you have a lot of projects going on right now, and you are short-staffed, and you just stood up here and talked for like an hour. So I really appreciate all your hard work that you've put into this. I think that this makes financial sense and is the best option for us, so I believe in it. I was hoping that Paula could maybe speak very specifically about something that may come up in the public, and that is that we need police officers. Why can't we use this money to pay for police officers?
That is a fantastic question, and that really goes back to the fact that these are capital dollars that are intended to be used for one-time uses and not ongoing uses. In, in city governments, we have what we call funds, and funds, depending on the funding source of each fund, there's restrictions on how we, how we can use those dollars. And this is one of those funds where we're restricted on how we can use some of those dollars, and this could not mean, could not be able to afford us police officers because it's not on, it's not meant for ongoing expenditures.
We've yet to meet the police officer that only wants one paycheck.
Yes.
That's, when I'm talking about our, our budget with, with our residents, that seems to be the most direct answer is, one-time money, we can get them, but then we can't keep, we need to keep paying them, so. It, that, that, that needs, that money needs to keep coming, as opposed to sort of that savings account that you set aside for the, as Julie started out with, the kitchen remodel or those kinds of things, so.
Absolutely.
Other questions from council?
We should just both stand up.
All right. So I, I want to say a huge thank you to our entire leadership team, Pat and Tammy, all of our directors, Julie, Paula. This has been, there's those opportunities in your life that, while we've been doing all of this larger planning, this, this opportunity literally fell in our lap. It was a, here's a chance to do something transformational for the city. Council, you all have been extremely patient as we have gone through this process, and grateful for your willingness to sort of go on this journey. My hope is that we, not lobbying, but that we have a positive result next week at your, at your special council meeting. This, this is one of those transformational things for a city, and that means for our residents and the people that we serve, and those that provide that service, right? Making sure that our employees are taken care of. We're, we're building on that future, so. Councilmember Fincher.
With you saying that, I'm just going to say, all of us, you know, to support what we heard tonight, and I'm hopeful, too, because all of us who are here know that we need a new roof. All of us who are here know we have HVAC problems. We know a lot of the problems, and we don't even, I mean, us sitting up here, and we're not even working in here every single day. You know, I look at it, it's like, you have your car, I'm a person, I like to keep my car a long time. I keep my cellphone a long time. If it's working, why not keep it? But at what point, when I get to the point of making repairs, you know, you get to the point where you're throwing good money after bad, and I don't see any sense in sinking the amount of money that would need to be into this building alone, just for instance, to keep that going and be a good steward of our, of our residents' money. So I think it's, I hope that others think the same way.
Thank you. Thank you for that, Councilmember Fincher. I think it's a really good, a really good explanation. We've, we have all lived through this building with rain buckets, with our pest issues, same thing in the police department, there's been significant issues there. Yesterday, I thought that they changed the locks on me, I went away for a meeting, I came back and I couldn't get back in the building, because there was something going on with the, with the, with the building. My badge no longer worked, it's working again, but it's those kind of things, right? That, that it's really about being able to, to take care of and wise investment, so. Councilmember Michelle.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I completely agree with you. One thing that was really eye-opening was that it would cost 7 million dollars just to fix the HVAC in this building and the police building. 7 million dollars just to fix HVAC. I can't justify spending 7 million dollars to fix one thing, so, yeah.
All of these second things. Yeah. Too many things. All right. So again, thank you, Julie, Paula, Pat and Tammy, the amount of work that everyone has put in, it truly was an all-hands-on-deck and very comfortable with the amount of inspection and process and thought that's gone into sort of what that new building needs. Council, you will have a special meeting next Tuesday, or next Tuesday at 5:00 PM. This will be the only agenda item. My request would be, should any questions come up between now and then, please reach out. We want to make sure that as you enter into what, again, is going to be a significant decision for the city, that you have all the information to be comfortable. So please do not hesitate to reach out, and we'll do everything we can to get you those answers before that special meeting next week. All right. With that, we do not have any bids this evening, nor do we have an executive session. That brings us to the bottom of the agenda. Thank you, everyone, for the meeting this evening, thank you for all those that attended. With that, we are adjourned.